Mara Hogan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Here.
Jeff Frante.
Yes.
Um. Brian Haas.
Yes.
And Wayne White.
Yes.
Okay. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely is allowed by the Act Governor Baker signed into law on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two extending certain COVID nineteen related measures. The new law, chapter twenty-two of the Acts of twenty twenty-two includes an extension until July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two of remote meeting provisions of the governor's March twelfth, twenty twenty executive orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. This committee is convened via Zoom video conferences posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and accordingly be aware that any other, any, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, please let the chair know if you're recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so, use the raise your hand function now if you're planning to record or broadcast this meeting so I can make note of it. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in a folder titled Twenty Twenty-One, Twenty Twenty-Two Agendas under the tab Agendas under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the chair notes otherwise. Any citizen wishing to make comments to be read during a virtual meeting entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to commentsforscmeeting@maynardk.k twelve dot ma dot us. Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the citizens' comments agenda item is addressed. Please include public comment in the subject line and your full name and street address in the body of your email. Emails without this information cannot be read to ensure that your statement is read in its entirety at three hundred and fifty word limit is suggested. Statements longer than three hundred and fifty words may be cut short at the three minute mark in the interest of time, but will be submitted in their entirety for the public record. Comments are limited to three minutes or three hundred and fifty words to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. The chair will read only one statement from each citizen. However, citizens can submit any additional comments for the public record by providing a copy to the chair via email up until the end of the meeting, explicitly stating their desire to have these additional comments included in the public record. Please be aware that the purpose of the citizens' comments period is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the community it serves. As such, the protocol supports the unidirectional public sharing of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate meeting minutes. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I will ask each member if they have any comments, questions, or motions that they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold off speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meaning. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the chair and take care not to interrupt anyone who is speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Before that, we move to the first item on the agenda, roll call to come to order. Um, Mary?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Myrow?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Um, okay. You still don't have citizens' comments, right?
No, nothing.
Thanks. Um, urgent business?
We have lots of business that we'll get to tonight. Nothing that falls under that category.
Okay, thanks. Um, student representative report. Um, do we have anything that was like sent or anything to read?
Nothing.
Okay. Um, okay, student services, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year in review.
All right. Well, I was gonna try to hold out until we got sixty participants, but I think it's best I get started now. It's good to see everybody. Um, it's interesting. It was called the end of a year report, but for Rhonda and I, the year really doesn't end. The school year might end, but Rhonda's been, you know, closing out the invoices and whatnot for Wayne's team and also getting ready for extended school year, which starts July fifth. So we have a little bit of a break before we have the kids coming in for the five weeks. I'm gonna go over some, just some basic information. I put this together, I think, a couple of months back for, for, to share with CPAC. I have my notepad next to me. If there's questions that you have as I go through this or just as you're, you know, when the meeting ends and you want that information, get it to me or get it to Brian. Brian will get it to me. And I'll get it to you either the next school committee meeting or before that. Now, as far as student services, primarily we're involved with special education, psychology-related providers, which would be like the speech OTPT, the family success partnership, CPAC, and Medicaid. The office is tangentially involved with counseling, ELL, and nurses. Now, the first, the first page, I'm just gonna go over the indicators, one, two, three, five, and some MCAS results. There are indicators four, there's indicators six, seven, and eight. I have those here. Those are not particularly exciting or show any disproportionality regarding suspensions. But I certainly can go over those as well. Uh, the cover page, just, you know, Jimmy Carter, my oldest boy is named Carter, named after him. He had a statement, "The measure of society is found in how we treat" and how they treat their weakest and most helpful citizens, which is often the client tell that student services work to support. Any successes we have, I have to, I have to attribute to the staff, the teaching staff, the support staff, the paras, the ABAs. They do the work. My job is to get them what they need, get out of their way, and support them when they ask for the help. Now, as far as indicators one and two, as far as graduation dropout rates, as far as students with disabilities, we're above the state rate. I should say, we have more kids graduating than the state rate. And as far as dropout, we're a little bit more than the state rate. And because we have so few kids in those areas, all it takes is one or two students to either make us look like we're heroes or, oh, no, something horrible is happening. So it's very, it's great to see the numbers. Uh, there's nothing really, uh, out of whack on this. I truly would like to have one hundred percent students with disabilities graduating and zero percent for dropouts, and that's always gonna be my quest, but just not there yet. All right. Now, I wanted to do a little bit of comparison with the MCAS results, and I chose grade five simply because the kids have gone on. They had their early reading. They're now into their second year at Fowler. I wanted to compare the, the results for students with disabilities to all the students and look at the discrepancy. What I have found over the years is the discrepancy between what all students score and what students with disability score is roughly sixteen, seventeen points. Or, and so then I compared it to the highest performing districts, which would be District S and District D. As you can see, all students are scoring around five hundred and twelve points on the MCAS or five thirteen. And I looked at their discrepancy. Once again, they're within that range of anywhere from thirteen to twenty-five points. From that, Colleen, on the next page, from that, what I gleaned from is that if we truly want to increase the performance of our students with disabilities, the best way to do that is increase the supports we have for all students, because in the most highest performing districts, the, the students with disabilities rise to that level, and so the discrepancy is pretty much the same. So my recommendation is to make sure we're, we're focusing on our tier one and tier two and tier three. So that overall, our students improve. Then I looked a little closer. I've had people ask me, what's been the impact of COVID on student performance? So I looked at from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one, Maynard, the all is all students who took the MCAS. The difference was a drop of one point six points. That's not one point six percentage points. That's just one point six overall points. Where students with disabilities impact was a little greater, three point two points, which works out to be point seven percent. So the impact on COVID, of COVID on the MCAS scores was minimal. I think the impact on student, ELL students was, was greater. Um, I do not have that, that data for us tonight, though. Once again, just going back to the, I believe that, that once you improve the functioning of our district as a whole, everybody ends up improving. Now, indicator five. Have we seen this before? I think under budgeting to justify, you know, looking at the Tiger program. Over on the right-hand side, you have district rate. We're comparing that to the state rate. I looked at what we have now for data. It's very similar for what occurred for the twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two school year, where our full inclusion is very similar to the state rate. Our partial inclusion is much high, is higher than the state rate. But then for substantially separate, and when we look at the separate schools, we still have a little, a few more kids going out of district than what the, the state rate would be. And in looking at the, the kids who have moved into district or out of district, we are still very much within the, the budget as I proposed for next year. But we've had some kids move in. We've had some kids move out. And even looking at the next year or two, we have some students I know that are moving out or turning twenty-two. I also know we have some very involved students moving into the district, even before COVID hit at the early childhood level. The kids turning three coming in are much more involved. Uh, we are fortunate to have a pre-K program for the kids who are very much involved. Uh, many are on the spectrum so that those kids are kept with us as much as possible. Um, so that was created even before I came on board, and Megan Bowden, the teacher, and her, her ABAs are incredible in servicing that population. And generally, it is a balance with the kids going out to the kids coming in budget-wise. So I compared this to some of the stats I have from the other school districts. We're very similar. It's roughly around two percent of the kids going out. Some of those come to us already with an IEP. And we have some kids who are, as I mentioned, turning three, whose needs are incredible. I won't describe them now because I think they're so specific, it would basically identify them, and I wouldn't want to do that. Now, as far as the indicator five and the fact that we're, we do have a few more kids heading towards out of district. And I do, I still believe that as we expand and prove the tier one and tier two general net supports and our intensive work we have with tier three, including the Tiger at Green Meadow, which is all set up and ready to go. And at the high school, which is close to being all set, ready to go, because we're just finishing up some, some hiring and training. That should keep kids from being, to be referred out of district, ideally at the elementary level. It is very difficult once a student goes out of district to have them come back for a lot of reasons. Many of our out-of-district programs are wonderful. Their focus isn't on academics. So it's a challenge for the students who come back to academically be where their peers are. And so there does need to be a lot of, uh, transition work. You know, parents coming to visit classrooms and seeing how things are done. And also the school where the, the child is out of district, knowing what we do in our program so they could say, yeah, so-and-so is ready to return. But the best thing is not to have students being referred out at all. Uh, that is always our, our target. Now, one of the discussion areas I had, I think, briefly today with some of the admin team is, you know, as far as an overall philosophy in student services. The state, because of the impact of COVID, said, you know, those thirty-three indicators that are on those teachers' rubric and the administrators' rubric, we're gonna bring that down to the six key indicators. One of them, which I think if everybody embraced and worked towards achieving, is under one A, under, under curriculum being standard one. And we're in a learning environment. It's created, it's maintained, it maintains a safe and collaborative learning environment that motivates students to take risks, challenge themselves, and claim ownership of their learning. That is one of the standards that teachers agree to uphold and administrators agree to uphold once they accept that license. And I think if we can achieve that and target that within student services, I believe we'll see our dropout rate drop, our graduation rate increase, and overall keep students within the district. But then again, that's my determinate, that's my definition of success. You may, you may have something different. Uh, Colleen, there you go. So what is your definition of success? Uh, one of the things on the next page, it talks about, um, I say embracing the portraits. You know, for, for NEAS, the vision of a graduate or portrait of a graduate is a key cornerstone. What do we want our children to be able to do when they graduate? By the way, there was an outstanding graduation. That's the first one I've ever gone to in thirty years. Uh, that, that was outstanding. I, I think there, there was so much of the voice of that graduating class that was shared. That, that was awesome. I don't know if that happens every year, but I'm looking forward to next year and hearing a lot of the same. But yeah, the port, so we talked about the portrait of a graduate or vision of a graduate. I, my recommendation within, uh, student services and then overall is what, what do we want a student coming on a GM to be able to do? Or out of Fowler to be able to do. So I think this vision needs to start with the little ones rolling into, you know, rolling into pre-K. Now, that is the, the presentation. I also have a list of trends if you're, 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 or we, anyone have questions on that? Because I have a list of trends going into next year within student services that I'm more than willing to share. I'm trying to stay within my twenty minutes.
I think that'd be interesting. I, I think if you've prepared something with trends, you definitely want to hear it.
Well, all right, here it goes, Hillary. Now, um, so I, I have my, my table. It's in three, I have three columns. One is the focus area, one is the issue, and one, what's, what's the action? I'm gonna start with early childhood. Because my early, the, the pre-K team have identified the kids coming in very needy even before COVID hit. That has becoming, that has become even more intense with the, with the impact of, of COVID. And that the number of kids being referred for assessment and number of kids being found eligible for services and the intensity of the services. Couple of things. We're, we're shifting services a little bit. I had to add a little more OT time, occupational therapy time. We did something a little different with speech pathologists. I contracted out for speech pathologists, the, the additional, like a point four outside. Well, instead of that, using that money up to hire someone on the outside, I'm able to use it to get a, a part-time person in-house to work with more kids. So we're looking at that shift where we have, we need Cheryl Feinstein, who does a lot of the pre-K kids, to work with them even, even further. Um, and also looking at, I, I was part of an early childhood education team in another district where we actually reached out to all the service providers, the private service providers of kids who were age four or five, the pre-K level. We actually involved them with some play groups when pre-K wasn't occurring. Uh, we would invite them to some professional development, and we had a monthly meeting also so that they would have an understanding of what we are teaching the pre-K kids so they could possibly do the same and be seen as a resource. I believe that's an area we need, I, I need to look at further. Unless, of course, at some point I win the lottery and I'll contribute tons of millions so that we can give every kid in the district who was pre-K age, pre-K services and not have to worry about a pay to play.
So can I just clarify? Does that mean, um, the kids that are getting like PTO T and speech that aren't in the preschool, that are like getting, like their parents are bringing them just for those services? To make sure they're getting the same.
We may have a couple of those, but generally, so we call those walk-ins. We may have some walk-ins for speech in that and maybe some for OT. That generally is a choice of the parent. Otherwise, usually if you have those needs and you have even the slightest academic needs, we're probably gonna find you eligible and have you on an IEP. I do have a handful of kids who are walking, that are walk-ins for speech, and I think one for OT.
So the thing you were just saying about working with those service providers, is that, so I, I was just a little unclear about what you're talking about. Does that mean, um, the kids are getting services in pre-K versus the kids that aren't getting services but are in the pre-K? Like, what, what was that referring to?
There's, there's a couple of parts to it. We do have a few more walk-ins that require the services of speech and or OT. So we need, I needed to increase the, at least, uh, my OT that was a point seven. I have right now is a point eight to be able to pick up the increasing number of kids. For Cheryl, the amount of kids at that age group who need the, the speech services has also increased. So that's where I was able to shift the money from contracted provider to a part-time employee because I can get more hours from a part-time employee for the same amount of money as I have to contract out. Then it's basically because of volume. It's just the volume of kids in the younger ages has increased over the last year and a half.
Jeff, can I ask a question about the walk-ins? I guess I never knew that we did. Is that something new that we?
No, that, that, that's, that's always been available. Some kids only require that service, and some parents are like, fine, we'll keep our little pre-K home, but can we bring them in just for speech services? Absolutely. Once you hit three, you are eligible for services all the way to age twenty-two.
I, I thought they had to be in the program, though, the preschool. I thought they, they just came to the preschool because they don't pay for it, and it would benefit them all around. Do we?
We, we do have some speech-only or OT-only kids. They call them services, uh, service-only IEPs. Sometimes we can do it just on a service plan and not even have an IEP, but I'd rather have an IEP documented so the state knows and, and we know. There's not many students in that category. Most of the kids coming in that need those services also have a, a lot of social pragmatics because I think the little ones haven't had a lot of contact with other little ones over the last year or so. So that's a big piece, you know, just, just being able to get the little ones together and be able to somehow communicate when they've been home without, that, that's, that's quite of a, you're welcome to come to pre-K because once you see it, you go, oh, oh, I remember this. So you figure fifteen cats all together that you're trying to, you know, keep, keeping one, 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 one area. It, it is a very active time. Unfortunately, Jane Vasta, who's been our leader in pre-K retiring, which is wonderful for her to retire. Um, I think Mr. Rulo has interviewed and hired some outstanding folks so we can hopefully keep that, keep that, keep that, uh, level of service going. Most likely with Ms. Vero's taking the lead as a, the pre-K leader.
Thank you. So, oh, I was just gonna say, so you would let us know because I was afraid that the kids that are walk-ins, it's because we don't have spaces for them. You would let us know if we needed to add another class, for instance.
Oh, I think a lot of people would hear if we had services, but someone said there's no space.
Okay, good.
There, there is no, there, that should never be said that.
I didn't think so.
Find the space creatively and cooperatively. Um, you know, within Green Meadow, but so far, so good. You know, it is tight in some spots, especially going into next year where we're adding the Tiger program. But no, that is not the case at this point, not at all.
Thank you.
So that gives you a little bit about early childhood. The next piece is more the early reading.
Before you go on, I just had another quick question concerning the walk-ins.
Yep.
Do we have, do we have walk-ins that are not in pre-K? So kids that like, do we offer those services for kids that do homeschooling?
If there's homeschooling or in a private placement, and it's all go, it goes on a proportionate share. We have to spend a certain amount of our federal money on kids who are homeschooled or in a private placement who would normally be eligible. So that, say, little Jeff is homeschooled, but I really need to work on my articulation and my rate of speech. We would have a team meeting and say, how can we, what can we offer? It doesn't have to be exactly what we would offer if, if little Jeff came into the public school, but we need to try to offer what we can. We have just a couple of those students, and I, and largely is for kids who may have gone to a private, maybe pre-K or K, but older kids, it's, it's rare, but it does happen. It does happen. Absolutely, we're required to do that. And the thing is, once we have them a little bit in our school, we try to bring them in completely into our school versus staying homeschooled or private, but.
Good. Thank you.
Sure. As far as early reading, for those of you that went to the, and thank you, the, the MEEF folks, you heard about, uh, Linda Muldoon and Mary Finnegan regarding Orton Gillingham, which is a evidence-based method of, of improving a student's reading. Uh, they are now officially trainers in OG. They're going to be training four teachers at Green Meadow, working with eight students so that now those teachers will become certified in OG and, and be able to spread that knowledge, that they're, the teachers are coming in over the summer a little bit. Uh, and Mary and, and Mary and Linda will be working with them, and then over next, the whole next year, there are quite a few hours that they have to put in working individually with these students to reach that level of certification. That's on the docket. Um, we, I, I've contracted with Landmark, who's, who has a very good reputation working for students with language-based needs, including reading and writing. I've had them consulting with Fowler now for two years, and I'll be using them next year as well. Uh, one of the things the staff liked is, you know, PDs that just come from one day and go away, really, it's nice. But to have somebody who we consistently have developed a relationship, uh, the contact that Landmark Caitlin will come in, do observations, make recommendations, and during those half-day PDs, do some PD with very specific staff who want to increase their skills uh, in language-based.
Jeff, can I ask a question real quick about the, the OG? So, um, I know one of the providers that you mentioned is retiring this year, though, correct?
Well, yes.
She was on our, our meeting.
Well, yes, yes.
Miss Finnegan.
Sure. Yes, yes and no? That makes sense. Yes, she is retiring from being a full-time person. I'm hiring her as part-time. So instead of contracting out for part-time, I get Mary back.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for clarifying because I know that she happened to be in our, we, you know, we appreciated her, her retirement at our last meeting, and I just wanted to clarify, it's more that she's stepping back from the full-time role as a, and is still gonna be supporting the district.
Yeah.
Yeah, the training that she received will, will still be, Maynard will still be benefiting from that.
Absolutely. And she'll keep the, uh, the high school caseload also for speech language. But yes, I envision Mary never retiring. She's, I don't know if she's caught the Charles Gabron bug where I retired, but I love doing what I'm doing so much that I really don't retire. Um, so yeah, as long as we can keep married, the longer we keep married, the better. Um, as far as another, another trend or what, what, what's good to see is we shifted from an LPN to an RN. It's a higher level of training. Uh, that would, so we will, right now, we're looking at four RNs in the district as opposed to three RNs in an LPN. That certainly helps when one of the RNs is out, another RN steps in. Excellent. And also because we have, when we have the four RNs, the, the, the fourth would be able to be at a school to assist, whether it's with documentation, screenings, uh, physicals, depending on the volume of need in a particular school, which is normally at, uh, Green Meadow, will be able to, to service the kids. Mental health is probably the area of the greatest amount of support that we built this past year and going into next year. One of the things my counts, my psychs and my counselors brought up is what if we have a really difficult case? In the old days, we'd be able to talk to somebody on the outside, and we haven't had that. So I was able to contract with, with a gentleman, Christopher Benacci. And also Dr. Mulder has also agreed to, to get involved. He works for the Inspire program. So then on those cases that are incredibly complicated, they have someone from the outside being able to assist them. Um, I was involved with networking through the, the school mental health leadership series. It's about fifteen hours. A lot of it is using the SHAPE system was a way, which is a way to evaluate your own school mental health system. So I, I was involved with that to make those connections on the outside. Uh, I contracted with an outside school psych company to just do assessments. We run around, we run about a hundred and twenty assessments a year. I have only two school psychs. They can't do all the assessments and do the direct service work to the, for the neediest kids. So I was able to have some fun set aside for a school psych to come in and do just assessments, and that's worked out very well. We also have our guidance counselors that are able to do direct service work for the students for school adjustment. Um, the reality is the mental health services on the outside are not as great as the need. So even though schools should not be in the, the role of providing a mental health services unless it connects with school, that is what we're doing for a lot of young people uh, that need that level of service. And I know we talked about, should the town get a, a social worker? And perhaps the school district share in that social worker. What we do have is the, uh, Nessbet Valley Collaborative has their family success partnership. That was in place before I, I came, and I just kept it going. For the ten most neediest families that need that wraparound design of services, they are available. Uh, cases are brought up to them on a monthly basis, whether it's through the school psych or, or the counseling group. So they, they identify the families, work with them, get them what they need. Sometimes they stick with them for years. Other times it's, okay, you're where you need to be, and then they pass them off. We, we continue to have our Oasis program based on the bright model. Uh, and it was a very nice email that came from a, of a mom of a student who graduated. Who just pointed out that if it wasn't for Oasis, she had no idea where, where her child would, would be at this point. And for the amount of work that Brian and Melissa. And for the amount of work that Brian and Melissa put into supporting the kids in the Oasis program. Uh, that's pretty incredible. So that, that is continuing. We, we average no more than eight students in the, in the Oasis program. And I know we've talked about, gee, do we need something like that at Fowler? I think that's a discussion for another time, because it really needs to be focused on the kids coming out of a hospo-ation. It's not, gee, put the behavior kids there. That's not the role of the program. So I think there's some misunderstanding of what that program is. I am sure that Ms. York, Principal York. Uh, would folk, i- i- what, what little she knows about the Oasis program right now, she is fully in support of, of keeping the program going. And we still have Elliot Hospital that'll come in and work with some kids who are eligible for private psych services. We provide them with the space for them to provide, uh, to do the direct service work. So as far as within mental health, I, I think we are I think we're in very good shape, and even the ratio of counselors to students is much higher than what the, the, even the state uh, school mental health counseling organization would recommend. And, uh, just need to keep that going. Medicaid reimbursement. Woo-hoo. All right. There's different ways you'll get re- for reimbursed for, for Medicaid. And when I say reimbursed, the town gets reimbursed for Medicaid. Okay? But then the town, through what money they give us, I'm sure they can, they consider that. I always like to bring in more money. I don't like to have staff do tons of work and not have access to that money, but I think we have a good balance right now. We've increased the, we're, we're, I am now submitting the direct service uh, form for Medicaid, because that's another way to get reimbursement. In addition to, we have what's called Ro- uh, random moment time studies. So any service provider who is Medicaid eligible, randomly you would be asked, gee, what were you doing at seven thirty-six PM on this Thursday evening? And it would go to any one of the, the, the people, and they would say, well, I was doing this Medicaid-related thing, or I was having lunch, or I was on, whatever it was. That goes towards the amount of money coming back from Medicaid. And that, that, that not, that money, as you know, jumped quite a bit because the Medicaid folks re-categorized what we do and said, well, yeah, that really is, uh, Medicaid reimbursable. Uh, the staff have been outstanding in responding to their random moments when they get those. So I think as I add on the speech services, I can then go after nursing. I could take a look at OTPT, and at some point, the ABAs, uh, B CBA, uh, work for kids on the spectrum. Um, because it's such a complicated formula, I have no idea if that's gonna result in a whole lot more money. But if it does, well, we can always discuss that with the town and say, listen, we're doing all this other stuff. But that, I'll, I'll leave that to Brian and Wayne to, to go forth and, 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 and pursue that. But at least on my end, we're doing more with the Medicaid. Um, we, we do, like, as I mentioned, we do have the Tiger programming that's starting up at Green Meadow. Uh, Karen, the Assistant Principal, and Katie, the B CBA, went out and visited other places. So they have put together a programming based on what they've seen, as well as the success we've had at Fowler, which is largely due to the, as I mentioned, the ABAs and the B CBA and the, and the, the teacher. To try to create that at Green Meadow as opposed to sending some young people out of district. And we did have a young person go out of district, who I think if we had the Tiger, probably would, that would not have happened this year. So I'm looking forward to that, getting, uh, up to speed. High school, we had some students who, well, some of them are going to the high school, some are going to, um, to Asabet. So we're gonna have that program built and ready with a smaller number, so that as the kids are coming up from Fowler, will be that much, uh, in, in better shape. Uh, as far as the, the CPAC, we're just gonna, I, I love the idea of, of spending money on CPAC for the, the professional development opportunities. Unfortunately, one of the key CPAC people moved to Lancaster, and she's bringing her kids with them, with her. So hopefully, we have other folks stepping up in the, in the CPAC to make those connections and say, can we get these other, uh, presenters? Uh, to present to staff, uh, to present to parents, uh, any other members of the community at large, so that there, there's always that commitment of funds to, to assist uh, the CPAC. We haven't been as fortunate with the LPAC, which would be the Parent Advisory Council for, uh, the parents of students, uh, English language learners. And, and I think what I need to do is get out to, whether it's a community group, to churches, to wherever folks are congregating and say, hey, you guys are all automatically members because of your, 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 your child. And then figuring out a way to, to get some, some, some repu- representation. Um, and if it's not folks being able, being comfortable to come to the schools, well, where does everyone meet? Fine, we will meet there. And that will be our, our LPAC meeting. So that, that's an area of, of, uh, still continued interest. And as I mentioned before, as far as budget-wise going into next year, as a, as a Director of Student Services, there's always that fear that, here, I'm gonna give you my best numbers for next year for tuition. I give that in December. Also, it's a heck can break out between December and when the town approved the budget, you know, a couple of weeks ago. Fortunately, this year, okay, we've had some students move in, some students move out. We've had like a shift of like two hundred thousand dollars into a thousand dollars. Right now, it's still where it, where, where I think it's going to be, which, which, which makes me very happy. Because I wouldn't want to have to come here and say, by the way, we're already two hundred thousand dollars, you know, you know, in, in, in the hole going into next year. So those are some of the activities. If you guys want to know even more, I have this wonderful whiteboard in my office of various things I get involved in. You, any of you are welcome to call ahead. Come on in. I'll introduce you to the board. And you could ask questions on any one of the items on here, and I'll tell you where we're at and where we're going. But as I mentioned before, any successes we have is due to the, to the, the staff that I'm fortunate to be associated with. Um, as well as the support of all of you. Um, and in, in particular Natasha, who, who is my, my, my CPAC buddy, which is great, um, because I've always been fortunate enough to be in districts where a member of the school committee is always, is also on the CPAC. And, and that makes things, that, that really helps out quite a bit. Um, as I mentioned before, if there's questions that come up now you want to ask, that's great, I'll answer them. If there's something that comes up later on tonight or tomorrow, write them down, get them to Brian, Brian, get them to me, and I'll get you all the information you, you you're asking for, because there is tons of data in, uh, Student Services, tons of it.
Um, I just have one question before we go around, but, um, what, is there anything that the, you wish the school committee were doing differently as far as this goes? Or that you need from us that, for next year?
I- i- it's funny. When, when I first told some friends I was going to apply for the interim position, that was two years ago. They said, you don't want to do it because the school committee is going to micromanage everything you do. Okay? And for me, I'm like, well, what's wrong with that? If they have questions on something that has been brought to them by parents or members of the community, I want them to bring it to me. So that's one thing. If you have parents bringing issues up to you, somehow get it to me, even if it's kind of a generic, hey, Jeff, what if you had da-da-da-da-da? And I know that's tough, because as soon as you start describing what is going on, as soon as I look into it, someone's gonna say, oh, that must be the XYZ family. Which for me, I'm like, I don't care what family it is so much, and what is the issue? And how can we support them? So the big thing I would ask of school committee is if you have folks coming to you, um, encourage them to go to whoever they're comfortable with. I don't think I'm an intimidating person. I like to feel I am welcoming. Um, but if they're more comfortable going to their teacher, maybe it's Jen Jones. Uh, um, maybe it's Michelle Masal. Go to somebody and say, hey, I have questions about XYZ. Or they go to, uh, Assistant Principal Snyder, and they say, Dave, I want to bring up something to you. And Dave says, Jeff, listen, I want to talk to you about, you know, so- something's going on. I don't know exactly. What can I tell this family? I, I have no problem doing that. So Hillary, I think that's, that's the key thing. It is keep talking and encourage families to, you know, bring up their concerns. And even if they say, well, you know, years ago, this is what happened. Okay, I can't erase years ago, but I can try not to mess up for this year going into next year. Uh, so that, that's a big help. Um, you guys have always supported the budget and budget recommendations. That, that's, that's incredible. Um, I think those, those are the key issues, and just, just keep asking those questions. Honest.
Hey, thank you. Um, if you have questions that you don't want to email, then Sasha.
Um, Jeff, um, thank you very much. I know this was newish for the school committee and for the Director of Student Services to do an annual presentation, and it kind of came about where it was thought of before COVID happened, and then COVID happened, and then we had a turnover in that administrator, and so I, it feels like this is the first, like, annual reporting that we've been able to kind of get like a year in retrospect from, from this.
Shame on me for not asking all of you, what do you want to know? So maybe that's part of it. Okay, I gave what I think
Yeah, no.
Kind of important, at least the attitude of Student Services. But if there's specifics, let's create an agenda, and that will live on for, 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 forever. And, okay, the end of the year, we want to know, how many kids did you serve? Okay, two hundred and fifty. How many are out of district? Okay, twenty-three. Uh, what's it look like for next year? Blah, blah, blah. How many new staff did you hire? Okay, how many staff? Any of that sort of stuff, you know, that, that could be part of it as well.
No, thank you. And I think that this, you know, CPAC has in the past, really always wanted to have your face or, you know, who you are. You have such a, a, a vast role, an important role in the district, but it's often behind the scenes, not always forward-facing. And so, um, we, we, we are, as a school committee, we're always advocating on things that you are working on, like these um, implementation of programs. So I, I think, you know, for me, I think it was always important to make sure that the community also gets a appreciation for the man behind, um, a lot of these efforts. And, and, and kind of you, as you have done, shared what your thoughts of trends were, um, sharing some metrics.
I can be very honest at times, and I'm working on that. I'm working on.
I like honesty. So actually, that's, I'm, I would, I would welcome that more often from everybody. So thank you very much, um, for that. And I can certainly give some, you know, just thinking about in the future for more structure, for feedback for, for next year, but I appreciate just like goals and things like that are kind of what I would be thinking of. What do we, like, what goals were planned in the beginning of the year, and how those may or may not have, you know, where you needed to shift. I know COVID has required everyone shifting, but that would be my first thought is, you know, you're setting goals for, you know, the different departments. The nursing also is a critical area that I think many people maybe don't realize also falls, you know, quasi under your, your, your purview as well. So I think it's
Kind of. Was the first year the principals had full, full oversight with the nurses. It's gonna happen next year, too. That's one of those tangential, I'm, I'm cut. Kinda involved, because if we need subs, I have to contract out for subs.
Right.
Uh, the budget lines are falling under Student Services, so when they put their collection together, what they need, okay, that goes to Rhonda. So I'm involved, but not really. Same thing with ELL, you know, that the purchasing lines might be within my budget, but principals are overseeing them as well. And same thing with counselors.
Yeah.
So when they talk about, gee, we want to go to Busake Naster, the, the conference for, for, uh, okay, I'm using my work money to, to cut them. So I'm involved, but not really. I don't like to get too much into the mix at the school level, but I do. But I try not to. So there's always that push-pull. So yeah, as far as goals for different departments, I certainly can work with the principals and say, okay, here's a thought overall district-wide for nursing. What are yours based on your school? And we'll put it together as one.
I think it's also helpful, because we advocate so strongly on a lot of these areas, and so it really is important to kind of, again, make sure that we're, we're focusing and are understanding, you know, how, how those programs are being implemented, you know, with fidelity, or where we're learning. We need, we may need tweaks from. So, um, so my questions for you are, one, I, when I totally agree about the tier one and tier two, I think that's critical, you know, uh, for bringing all kids and challenging all kids and bringing them into a better academic standing, socially, emotionally as well. What can you provide, any update on the co-taught classes and how that is impacted with thinking about tier one and tier two? Because I know the co-taught classes have been something the school committee has heard a lot about in the past few years and discussions on how we've been shifting, but I, I've heard, you know, from the community that that's not necessarily um, it, there might be, um, maybe a revision or a tweak to that.
Yeah, sure. Now, as far as the co-taught, the, the success of a co-taught class is based on the pair of professionals working with each other. I have some pairs that are incredible. Uh, let's just say I've had some pairs that haven't quite reached that incredible status yet. As far as outcomes of kids, once again, i- if we try to have a one-size-fits-all model, we may have a trend of kids coming up in a particular grade that, that isn't gonna work. What we have found with the kids coming up, and we can't all, we can't attribute it all to COVID, but we're finding kids who have difficulty with their reading and writing at this point. And so what we've done, and I mentioned to folks, listen, i- it is up to you guys are the professionals. You see the kids coming up. What do you want to do for programming? So then the, you know, special ed team leaders and the special ed teachers get together. They look at, how would we group this specific group of kids going into next year? So at this point, we do not have any classes that are the pure co-teaching, two people all day long going into next year. We have classrooms where there may be two people for particular classes. Otherwise, what they've done, they, they recommending to the principal more focused, smaller classes. That's based on the, that's based on what the kids are showing us at this point. So we're not eliminating it, but for next year, it's like, uh-oh, we have one group that, that was just a bad group. Uh, not a bad group of kids, but the grouping of the, the teacher, the special ed teacher, gen ed teacher just wasn't working. But coincidentally, we have a bunch of kids that need that OG and Wilson group grouping. Okay, so they might get their individual work here, but then now they're going to the mainstream to now apply that skill, and maybe the teacher is following them or the para is following them. But to say that there's two teachers all day in, in any of the grades, it is not, I don't, I don't see that occurring next year based on what the, the teaching staff have recommended.
So maybe that will be a follow-up, um, maybe an executive summary more, because I probably will have some more questions about that, and I'm sure CPAC will, um, as well. But if you can think about, um, I guess for each grade, you're saying K through all of them. There's no co- co-taught.
There's no two teachers in one class all day. In fact, there hasn't been, even before I came, there would be perhaps a special ed teacher for, for part of that time. But having the two professional teachers together all day long, uh, wasn't occurring. And I believe in two thousand eighteen, there was a presentation, a school committee saying, uh, that, that may not be able to occur all the time because of the volume of kids. So what we've done now, the, the teachers, once again, they look at the needs of the kids. And as much as want to say co-teaching sounds wonderful, right? It sounds wonderful. In reality, um, it's not as wonderful uh, in, in all situations, and especially depending on what the kids are presenting to us. So we have to, within Student Services, respond to, wow, this class very clearly needs to have more intensive language-based uh, work or reading work, uh, which is one of the reasons why I had, uh, contracted with, with Landmark to come out and assist. Uh, we have some teachers with a Wilson background and OG background. Okay, let's really go after what these kids need. And give an opportunity to generalize their skills, uh, out on the floor. So that, that may vary from year to year. The year after next would be like, you know what? These kids are not ready to go into a co-teaching because of the work we did this year. So every year, it would be different. And we'd be able to give you an update on the progress probably a couple of months into this upcoming year. Where are we at?
It definitely was happening in two thousand nineteen, because my kid was in a co-taught class in two thousand nineteen.
Yep, but that you may not have had a gen ed teacher, special ed teacher all day.
They better have been.
That's what the purist, that's what the purists call co-teaching. The purists think that co-teaching is two people all darn day.
So maybe we'll, we will revisit this, because I think this is gonna be more of a, a lot more questions to percolate on, and I want to make sure that you're we don't focus solely on, on that. That's just one thing. I, I've heard some changes, and I don't think the school committee has gotten a good update of, of pivots and understanding of that since the last presentation. Um, and it would be great to hear a little bit more about it at another time, um, maybe.
And the presentations are, have been presented to the principals, so I don't see how the school committee could know before the principals have decided uh, how they're gonna set up their schedules. But right now, none of the special ed teams have, have recommended that based on what they're seeing from the kids. Um, and that's gotten the support of the gen ed teachers who were part of that, that, the, the co-teachers of this past year. Uh, I'm looking forward to seeing the result, too. I'd much rather have the kids, to be honest with you, not in Sped at all. I love to be able to have any kid walk into any classroom and have the teacher say, you are welcome in my classroom. I know how to teach you. If not, I'm gonna I know how to teach you. If not, I'm gonna find out how to teach you. And then eventually specialty goes away. Well, gee Jeff, that's a nice dream, right? But that, I would love to be able to do that. I'd love to be able to have every teacher say, I will welcome any kid coming to my classroom. We're not quite there yet. Cuz I think if we had a little bit more of that, it won't be the need to co-teaching because the gen ed teacher would embrace and say, okay, little Jeff is coming to my class. I can support him or her. I have this IEP which helps me understand strengths and weaknesses. And I know who I can go to to get support, but that child is mine as a gen ed. So I'd much rather shift to that model than we're doing a pull-out and then some inclusion. That that's my, that's my big goal.
Yeah, no, thank you. Um, the other uh, question I I had was about um, restraint rooms. I know that each building has rooms, but I know at Fowler in particular, they have not needed to use the room in over two years, I believe. Um, but right now it is a dedicated space, the white space and, you know, kinda has no door on it and it's as a reminder, it's, I know it has a hole in the wall, like you just from prior, I would love to see that space re-purposed if possible into some type of sensory um, use or beneficial use for students. Um, instead of what they are right now, if they are no longer being used. And I just would love to get your feedback on, on that. Is it a cost issue?
I think that's a great question for the principals who oversee their buildings. How are you using that space? And that'd be a simple question is that, you can send it over to Brian. Brian, how are you guys using that space? I know Rob is really tight on space. Um, as far, and then it's like, well, okay, where where do the teachers have their place for kids who have that sensory need? Is there one place that everyone has to go? Or do teachers, because they don't wanna send kids out, have that almost as a part of a station where some kids can just kinda go and and chill, read, sit? Uh, I think you'd find there's probably more teachers wanting that model than here, take the kid out. Once again, once you get a kid out and if they really like going out, well, you just reinforce them wanting to go out further. So we gotta be careful how how we do that too. But I would say ask the, ask the principals. How are you using that space? Um, I've always encouraged my staff, especially my OTs, that if you want a sensory walk, okay, which would be where you put different things on the wall and on the floor. So if the kids just need to go for a walk, they can do different activities uh, down the hall. There's a little bit of that going on at Green Meadow and a little bit of that at Fowler. Uh, that's one way you could address sensory needs as well. Um, but I I would ask the principals, I mean, I could ask them too, but I would ask them or through through Brian, how are you using those spaces? Or what can we do for those spaces? Cuz I could easily come in on a weekend and take walls down. But I don't think they probably would appreciate that. So ask them. I bet you they probably already have plans.
I I I've asked from a, as a parent, I've already asked the Fowler. I haven't. So I can tell you, that's where my comment is is kind of rooted in, is not, it's not being utilized. Um, and and so that's, was great to hear. Um, and so um, I certainly will ask again.
Yeah, I don't think, I think we only had, what, three restraints this year? And now it's at Green Meadow and I think two are for the same students. So we we just don't use restraints in in those spaces for that activity anymore. It it's dropped tremendously, I think since maybe a high of maybe five or six years ago. There are a lot more issues going on, but then with the two BCBAs and the principals' approach to working with the students, there is a shifting of the mindset which get us to this point. So I think asking them, how how do you, how do you envision that space being used now that you really don't kinda need that?
Okay, um, thank you. We'll do that.
And I'm writing it down too.
Okay, all right. And the other point was about the Medicaid reimbursement. I know Mary and I constantly are working with Brian and Wayne or this is a reoccurring conversation piece. We've talked at the town level as well about it. And I wasn't sure if there is a way to get more of a budgeted FY twenty-three forecasted numbers for what you are projecting for Medicaid reimbursement, given the expanded scope of what is allowable that might help us better advocate for um, an amended budget potentially or something along that line a little bit more because the feedback we've gotten has been, while it's so unpredictable every year that we really are hesitant to amend or increase that anticipated line of revenue. And I think that's what we wanna in the wall. And I know, Mary, if you could speak to that, if that's what your sent, your feeling is as well.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm thinking and it sort of goes along with what you were saying, Jeff. I mean, if it's if it's more work for, if it's taking work or, you know, absorbing more work on part of our people and it's really not benefiting, not us, but the whole town, cuz I still say if it benefits the town, it it comes down to us. But it sounds from what you're saying that the work might just be exorbitant versus what the reimbursement might be.
Yeah, I I don't know yet cuz my my speech pathologists have to write down, what did you do? When did you do it? What's the magical code that you did what you needed to do? Prior to that, you had to do a service plan. This is why we're going to be doing this with the kid. Keep track of the date, do a cover page, sign the cover page, get it to me every month. I upload it and then magically this formula based on the percentage of people who have done the random moment time study and then Medicaid spits out a number. If they don't mess with what, how they categorize something as being Medicaid reimbursable, the number shouldn't be less than what we got this year. But our number this year was so much higher than the year before cuz Medicaid said eh, this disqualifies now. Well, they could come back and say, well, COVID's kinda calmed down. We're gonna do something different. Yuck, that would be.
And that's, that's what we, we've heard. It's that it's right now, the year-to-date receipts for that is like three hundred and twenty-something percent over what was budgeted by the town. It's uh, it was quite a significant. So is that a same number to your, to the the question? Is that a reliable number for FY twenty-three that we imagine? Or is there concern that some of that will be tapered back and some of those expanded uh, services will not be able to be reimbursable in FY twenty-three?
Well, one of the things was having the parents sign off on the authorization form. In the old days, you had to have that sign every year. Now you can sign one that lasts for ever.
Oh, that's great.
If they keep that going, then we have a handful of parents, we just haven't gotten those authorization forms for. And some of those are for kids who also receive direct services which are are billable. Um, so that's something that Rhonda looks at, I look at, we send it out, then we send repeat, repeat. So there's like, okay, put it in the kid's bag, send home, explain why this doesn't affect your ser- so we might get a little more there. Um, but yeah, if Medicaid decides to reclassify, oh boy. If we're able to really bump up even further our direct service claims, which I don't see that being a big, big jump. Um, do I think next year would be three hundred percent more than this year? No, 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 no. Do I think it could be the same? Well, we're submitting the same amount of information, if not a little bit more. But I I really don't know the Medicaid, whether they they might change their rate because of, I don't know, the Fed budget, whatever it is. Um, I think you can look at the trends over the last few years and go, okay, okay, well, it's never gone lower than, I don't know, whatever the number is. Then do we just only use our lowest number? I'd have to defer to to uh, Director White on is that a pro- cuz I'm not a business manager. I have no idea if that's a good way to go about uh, estimating money. Um,
I guess what I would would say between the two of you is that if there is information that is shared at some level that says that you can reasonably, um, you know, rely on the same method of um, accounting for reimbursement for Medicaid that will not be less than what you are currently. If there's any type of information that does get circulated to that level, that would be very helpful for us to to then use and and advocate um, for an in- potentially increase um, in that budget the town uh, forecast for the year because they clearly under-budgeted um, for FY twenty-two. And I don't know, I I think the caution area is for FY twenty-three that it might not be as high. And and so therefore, it's conservative budgeting again.
Yeah, if I could, I'll 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 reach out to my Medicaid contact and see if she has any, is catching any wind of are they looking to do something different either way? And I could share that with Wayne. I think it was great that they, they they went higher. Even if we didn't maybe see that, it was great. It went higher. And so I'm just gonna try to do with my staff as much of the the claiming as possible. And if they start saying, Jeff, this is killing us. This spent, we we spending four hours doing this stuff that I gotta go, ooh. And then we'll 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 look at what is that money coming in compared to, cuz if I'm pulling Cheryl from doing speech-direct work and we already know she has to do more, oh boy. And I wish, and Natasha, I wish there were solid numbers coming from from Medicaid. It really is that foggy.
Yeah. But I hear you. Thank you. Thank you very much for the work that you've done with that. So um, um, that's it. I'm all set.
Mary, Mar.
Um, just a couple of comments. Um, first of all, I I did, I'm surprised that, about the co-teaching, as I thought that that was a kind of an establishment, um, that, but you make some good points. So I really, I would like to see how it's all, how it's being adjusted in that I.
And that's why I have people use the term, no, 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 we did not stop it. We was pausing it because this is what our population needs. And boy, I have to keep reinforcing that cuz not everybody embraces co-teaching. Pausing it because this is what our kids are are showing up right now.
Right. I mean, there was an awful lot of research that went into us creating that template. Um, a lot of success from a lot of surrounding communities. Um, so again, I'm always saying we just jump from the pans to to the frying pan to the fire sometimes. But and I'm I'm thinking, I'm hoping that it was COVID-related that we'll be able to to get.
That's my, that's my best, that's my educated guess as well. Because the kids weren't able to do as much with language amongst each other or reading, you know, with guidance of teachers and then writing with guidance of teachers during the COVID time. Even though the MCAS results don't show a big impact, yeah, well, MCAS isn't really the ultimate decider of how how kids are progressing either. I'm hoping halfway through the year we go, wow, these kids are really taking off. Well, okay. Then halfway through the year, what is it going to look like for next year? And that's when our planning starts. Honestly, our planning will probably start after the first quarter, which is maybe the second week in November. Where are we at? And you know what? They might just say, you know what, we can shift now. And as long as the principals understand that and support that, we can move the sta- the staff. This is an outstanding special ed staff. And I would say it even if I wasn't the director. This, this is a solid crew who've been around for a while. And the new ones coming in have brought in such incredible energy and knowledge. I'm like, oh, this, this is, this is very fun for me because they've been given the the permission to, okay, you guys have your skills. What are you seeing? And I bet you, they they might just do some shifting probably after the first quarter. But that'll be based on the kids being successful.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I guess I'm I'm like you. I think the more that we can, we're able to keep all of the kids in the classroom, it just benefits everybody. So I'll look forward to seeing a presentation as it, you know, trickles out in the fall. But I just.
Write it down, Mary.
We'll put you on the calendar.
Rolling agenda for this year.
Exactly, definitely. You tell us when and when you'll be ready for it and we'll do that. And then just one um, nice comment that we, I really, and I'm always saying this too about, you know, helping our students to stay in district. And so the all the the tier-one, two and three, um, you know, the Tiger Program, the Oasis, all of those that um, are, seem to be working well and improving to to keep our kids in district for for their sake mostly. So, so thank you for that. And that's all I've got.
Thank you for this very in-depth um, overview. Um, I was very happy to hear um, that you're doing a lot of the, or a number of things that I think that, uh, when last time I was on the school committee and was part of the CPAC liaison, that we were really trying to push, like the OG and um, the contract uh, with Landmark. Um, so I'm really happy to see those. Um, that you're really kind of pushing that. Um, and um, I also agree about the co-taught that I was surprised to cuz um, my son was in one of the co-taught classes um, a couple of years ago. So um, I would definitely, definitely would like to hear more about that when you whenever we decide that we're gonna.
Yeah, I wrote it down for the November update. It might be the, who knows, the second or the the first or second uh, school. I I don't know your dates just yet for for November School Committee. But that's where I can give an update. Absolutely. I'll put it in the book and we'll get that. If I have something sooner, I'll I'll share it sooner.
Thank you.
Um, it could be nice. I know um, a couple of years ago, when the co-teaching classes were on the school committee agenda, a couple of the teachers came and talked about what they liked about it, what they found frustrating, where they needed more support to make the program more effective. Um, you know, if any of them are willing to come on a Thursday night, that could be really interesting and helpful too.
Um, this crew, i- i- if if asked, they will do anything. I- it truly is that that is, I mean, I can see Jen Jones coming up here and she'll just lay it all out for everybody. Um, and I think they've been, they they realize, at least from my perspective, that you know what, I I I've been around a long time, but I don't have the knowledge you guys have. You've been teaching for the last, you know, fifteen, twenty years. And for me, I'm like, I I I'm smart enough to know that I don't know everything and but I know that there's a lot of people that know an awful lot. So if I were to have Jen Jones or or uh, Michelle Masala or Lisa James and say, you know what, we need to get the school committee an understanding of what it's looking like now versus what we did previous years and what is our plan going forward if we're going to, you know, obviously reinstate the co-teaching. They might say, well, we would, but this is what it would look like. Uh, so yeah, I wrote that down. I wrote down the November update and teacher report. They will absolutely uh, come in and do that.
Yeah. I am, my daughter was in um, a co-taught classroom and it didn't go very well for her. It was new. Um, and the makeup of the kids in the classroom made it tough with the different needs that the kids had. Um, but it was interesting to hear the teachers, um, her teachers didn't come to present the school committee, but other teachers did and said that there wasn't enough support on learning how to co-teach effectively together. Um, and so that was really interesting to hear, like the, see the effect that was, and then also hear what the teachers were thinking too. Um, so I think that could be helpful.
Yeah, I think for them to see models of success and talk to, you know, cuz we have, I'm gonna use Jen Jones again. We have Jen Jones and Deb Holly. Probably the most outstanding co-teaching model. Uh, followed very, very closely by Lisa Boardman and Jen Fearetti. Also, an incredible group. Uh, a pair. You wouldn't know who was a special ed teacher, general ed teacher if you went into their classroom. But like they said, we have only three kids that might fit this model, but we have these other seven in the same grade. So I think that's where a lot of the kids, well, how can we do our our grouping a little different? Do, and 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 some folks even thought about, well, do we have a a do we have a two-three grade? Or a one-two grade? Which, I'm not suggesting that at the school committee. Uh, I I I'm just saying. They know they have the permission to think, think, think out loud, present it, let's run it through. And once again, it's every year. You know the kids coming up. We may have kids move in and kids move out, but generally, we have a very stable population. Which makes it, that's a tremendous advantage in saying, well, okay, for K, we're doing this, but then in first grade, we'd have them do this, and second grade, this, and then um, so yeah, I will absolutely be able to to have some staff come in and 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 present to all of you. And then at that point, before we have them present, I'll say, okay, what questions do you have? So I can get them the questions ahead of time. And I know you'll have more, but get the questions ahead of time. So then they'll come in and say, hey, you know, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, and and so they'll be able to make a a brief but uh, insightful presentation.
Thank you so much for your presentation and the, especially hearing about the trends that you mentioned. Those, those are helpful for us.
Sure. Now, I I have a trouble uh, keeping track of twenty minutes. Did I fill up all the twenty minutes? Okay?
Yeah, just a time check where we're way over the time.
Um, okay, we can go on to the local actions and approvals to forget, but thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Brian?
Yeah, so that would be the school committee voting to approve the um, information from the school, the Green Meadow School Building Committee for the preferred schematic design information that they're submitting on Monday.
Do we vote for this or what it was, what, um?
Can we give a little context a little bit about, cuz I um, more about what it is?
It's everything they've done to this point. They've narrowed it to um, alternative number seven. So this is sort of as far as they've gotten to this point in terms of which design. design, which site design. Um, they're now looking at setting up mechanical, electrical, plumbing subcommittees, safety subcommittees. Um, so this is the binder that they've shown that they've put together. It's, you know, four inches or six inches thick. Um, with all the information, it's sort of a repackaging of everything from two and a plus years ago, the statement of interest to all the design information, the workshops with the community, the recommendations, all the meeting minutes from the school building committees, which includes uh, Mary. She's been at, at all of those meetings as well. Um, so this is the next step in that process to keep us on track with MSBA. Um, and there's a timeline actually in the presentation later this evening, just from MS, from our OPM about some key dates up and coming. This was really just giving approval and supporting the school building committee.
Um, it's just that wondering, is there anybody on the school building committee that has an issue with this? Like, I mean, I don't have an issue with it, but I don't know everything they know. Like, is there anybody that has concerns or saying like something's not addressed or? Okay.
Yeah, it was unanimously voted, so.
Okay. And how set in stone is the design, like the design number seven? Like if in the process of doing, okay, but um, in, in terms, set in terms of like not going with design six by four? Or is it set in terms of like when the safety committee meets and they think that like a different entry with design would be safer or like how much flexibility?
I mean, w- we can pretend that that is realistic, but real, realistically speaking, the OPM and the designers, this is what they do. They have safety consultants who are part of the process. They wouldn't, they wouldn't present something that's not in line with what MSBA has been approving.
Okay.
They're not, I mean, the design is very consistent with current school building designs that have been built recently. They're in line with safety measures that are in place. Things that could change as we go through the process. There could be some value designing items. You know, they may recommend certain things on the walls that are expensive, you know? And we, the committee may say, hey, we could save some money by changing that. The overall design though is, is pretty set.
Okay.
Cause this is what leads to, I mean, the whole idea is this what, is what leads to them then diving into like a really deep dive for schematic design and being able to come up with that exact number of how much, how much wire do we need? How much piping do we need? How much? Everything. There's no stone left unturned. Um, and this is the next step in that process to move us along.
Okay.
And Brian, this is part of, sorry, Hillary, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Um, this is part of, I know Greg had sent over some additional preliminary numbers, right? I don't know if that was who that, I can never tell who Greg sends things to, but.
They're all blind copies.
I know, I know. So that is also part of this whole exercise as well, right? Getting that information. Cause I didn't see that in here, but I remember just getting it. I didn't know if it was because I was on the budget subcommittee that he shared it. It was a heavily discussed uh, topic in, in the last budget subcommittee meeting. Um, if that's something that, I don't know, Hillary, did you receive or, or Mauro? Did you end up getting the information that Greg sent about the the cost estimate or of how?
I mean, the building subcommittee definitely got it, saw it, talked it over.
Yeah, I just didn't see it with this, but I wanna just, it's part of.
It's part of that package.
Right. It's, it's part of this whole exercise, correct?
Correct. Yep.
I'm, I'm just checking right now. I don't recall, but I mean, it's very possible.
Um. Let me see what it, basically from what he explained at, and Mary, you might be able to better highlight, but it was the PSR cost estimate building break, uh, breakdown. Basically, it was like a soft commitment that now that the design plans, as I was explaining, the design plans were accepted that are we sure, kind of like, this is how much the forecast amount like might be for each household, something, it was along those lines. And the way he explained it to us, which was a kind of a, I, I hadn't heard it yet, but it was like, could be an increase of five hundred dollars per household and in, in the overall cost of what might be required to commit at town meeting. Mary, is, is that sound?
Yeah, at this moment, um, that's what they're talking about, but there's still an awful lot. That's like what Brian is talking about with really getting into the weeds and figuring out the, you know, the um, oh, the, the um energy neutral. I can never use the word, but. The chips, we're doing the chips versus the leads, um, and all of that, and how we can get additional uh, reimbursement from MSBA. So this is like the, the first step to then start getting into the real weeds. So right now it's, it's a range, but um, I think it's much of twenty twenty-three that it'll really be fine tuned as far as what the total dollar amount is. What MSBA is, is going to be reimbursing and then we'll have a better feel for the household, for the average household.
Um, so how have, how involved have teachers been in this? Like I, I'm just, my only worry is that, you know, we approved this and then here that the teachers hate something about it and we've moved forward and.
Yep, they've been involved when they've come to the buildings and there's been several sessions that they and the community have been involved in, involved in.
Wayne? Oh, wait, she, what, can you unmute Wayne? And Colleen, are you still raised from before or you have something else?
Colin, did you, you, you might have your hand raised before me going on.
It was from before. She's good.
No, I just wanted to reiterate what, what Brian said. Number one, this is the normal process. Um, the uh, the, the alternatives were presented at, as a minimum, I think of, I, I call them town halls. Uh, virtual town halls where um, it was presented virtually and the invitations were sent out to the entire Maynard community. When people had opportunity to provide feedback and input, uh, and that uh, feedback and input was um, taken. For example, uh, some of the feedback was to how we ended up at one of the designs was where the community space was located in the design. And one of the designs, the community space, and by that I mean the gymnasium cafeteria uh, slash auditorium was skewed to one end of the building. And the feedback that came and I think even um uh, from, from the administration, it might've been Brian in particular, and said, that's a long walk because the free K and K were at the opposite end and that, that would be a long walk walking it through and getting through to the other side. And so that influenced um the favorability, if you will, of other designs because that was considered as less favorable. Um, another thing that I kept pushing was Green Meadow presented disadvantage because they don't have a whole sort of kitchen. That my thing with whatever design we have, you know, the students deserve to have a complete and well-stocked uh, full-size kitchen. And so there were some designs that facilitated that more uh, than others. And so everyone has had an opportunity to provide input. Um, and, and the links have been on the uh, the school website. And people can, could, could go on and take a look at it. So I think um Colliers and MBG have done a good job of trying to push this information out to the public and to get major community people.
Thank you.
And if I remember correctly, there were some teachers that also were part of the visioning sessions that were done initially. So they had some good feedback too, and we'd break out into small groups. And um, there was some really good feedback regarding that.
Okay. Okay. Um, does someone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion. Let's see if I can get this right. Um, to authorize the owner's project manager to submit the feasibility study with materials to the MSBA for consideration. God bless you.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. I think that's it.
Is that part of the motion?
Yeah, that's, oh yeah, the sneeze, the sneeze.
God bless you.
God bless shoes.
Discussion?
Uh, the only other discussion part that I just wanted to highlight, because it was again brought up in our, um, I think I brought it up when they, the Colliers came out and also in the budget meeting was that um, that, which didn't really, I didn't appreciate fully until I kind of asked was that this, everything is proceeding with the assumption that Green Meadow, the current building will be coming down. And I know in the past, there was discussion about potentially repurposing Green Meadow. That is not the, the, the path that this, you know, everything is proceeding on. And there was very good information, although it wasn't highlighted in their presentation to us, but when we talked about it in the budget um, subcommittee meeting, like option one, like the building, there's still gonna be expenses even to retain the building in any form. And so that would, I think, as the conversations with the public proceed forward, it's, it's, it's um, needs to have that parallel, you know, um, information that in the absence of a new building, you're still gonna be incurring expenses, we're ADA compliance, all those things that will need to be um, factored in. So it's not nothing. There is no zero cost option um, moving forward. So that was really helpful to kind of reinforce and then discuss um, as, as the community engages further on it. So anyway, that's all I have. And um I vote yea.
Okay, here's the roll call vote, Mary.
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Um, Mauro?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Um, I, I saw there's a place I need to sign. Is that something you can use my stamp for, Colleen? Okay. Um, the approval of student activities fees for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Um, so this is a little bit bizarre having it on the agenda. Um. In our policy, we say we're going to vote to approve them yearly and I believe in some, um, in the mask training I did, they said we needed to vote to approve them. So we have it on the agenda to vote to approve them, but the budget has been created with them set the way that they are. Um, so there really isn't wiggle room for us to like not approve them. Um. My only question is, I did not know that we were charging people with free school lunch a hundred dollars. Um, how, what kind of hardship would there, that there be if we eliminated that part piece?
We've already made, I mean, honestly. Go ahead, Colleen.
There's a lot of other options and um, the athletic director usually makes families very well aware of that. There's um, Maynard's um, what is it?
Right, which now is something different, but there's opportunities for scholarships.
Yep, there's several.
Yeah, I get all that, but like my child, uh, uh, when she was at Fowler, she had seen about the drama. And she never told me she wanted to try out because she thought we don't have four hundred dollars. And that, I actually we did, but she thought four hundred dollars is such a huge amount of money to ask for. She didn't want to ask for it. And so she never told me she wanted to do drama. I never would have had the opportunity to ask the school for support. Um, it was just, she never, it, like it, it went nowhere because she saw that as being an insurmountable expense. And obviously we've had discussions about wanting to eliminate, I want to eliminate all the fees. Um, but, and I know that's not practical right now. Um, but I was thinking particular, that's, that really stood out to me that we would charge, like if a family, the, the income level to qualify for free school lunch is so low. And if these families with that income level are receiving, you know, electrical assistance and food assistance and heating assistance and free health insurance because they can't cover those expenses. I, I don't know that expecting somebody to all of a sudden have a hundred dollars to pay for sports is reasonable. And I also was thinking possibly there's not that many kids that this would impact that you know, we could change that one piece without hurting the budget for next year. But I don't, maybe it does impact a lot, but particularly if we're not collecting it from.
Page two, page two also notes um, what they can do to further get waived of the application.
But so are we ever actually collecting a hundred dollars from people who are at the income level of free school lunches?
Some, yeah.
I think we, I, my recommendation, you leave it as is, because if they have the money that they can afford and they see the value in their students playing, participating, et cetera. That's fine. If they can't afford it, there's multiple ways that we address that. And I'm comfortable saying that no child is, is ineligible to play because of finances. But if we chip away at this because it's just to be nice, we will be losing revenue that we've been counting on and we will end up with a deficit here. Cause that's what Wayne did the research.
And I get that for the most of it, but for the kids that are at that income level, do we want to be collecting revenue from families that can't afford food?
If they can afford it, they can afford it. I'm not gonna judge how they spend their money.
Natasha?
Um, so a couple of things. One is I was looking at the comparative towns and I appreciate the effort in, in doing that surveying work. I would like to see a comparative towns on the benchmarking uh, communities that we've been talking about and that has been raised within our budget conversation. So Hudson, Millis, Ashland, those are the ones that the town um, cause those are more um, resembling of, of our community makeup versus some of these more affluent communities that, you know, may have different needs and whatnot. So that would be something I'd be wondering if we can get information on, on that. Um, and then if um, I don't feel comfortable voting on this tonight, I just will be clear. Um, I think that I know that they're the same, but I also know that if there was a time sensitivity to this, I would have hoped that we would have talked about it at least in the budget subcommittee and this hasn't been brought forward to discuss in the budget subcommittee recently. Um, to get an understanding of, you know, feedback or some concerns or an opportunity to maybe flush out some of these things because the activity fees are a reoccurring uh, topic of um, concern that the community has raised. Every year we get emails about them and instead of just approving what is already in existence, I just want to make sure we could land in the same place. So I'm not saying that would happen, but I just want to understand what is the uh, urgency in doing this now versus when do we need to start collecting the money uh, to happen? That's what I want to understand.
I don't think that there's a lot of urgency other than we should have done this before the budget, like we, like we should have voted to set the fees, then created the budget with understanding of what those fees would be. Because now we're at a point where we're voting on the fees at when it's basically too late to do anything about them.
It's never too late. I mean, it's, to be honest, if the, they should have been, it's never too late. So if the budget was created, assuming these were happening and we didn't vote on it, then you know, that's a conversation, separate conversation on why, you know, why that maybe happened. But I think if there's no urgency and in this money needs to be uh, voted on tonight, I, I would ask that we at least allow us to have a conversation, flush out some of these concerns. Uh, I believe me and Beth may have some feedback and I uh, for that, that maybe she would want to share as well and give that opportunity to do so. And maybe at the next meeting, you know, we can possibly revisit it if there's, unless there's a need to start collecting this now. It doesn't sound like it.
Okay, so I've got a question. So say for instance that we do change it and we end up with thirty thousand dollars less. How are we gonna make up for it? Cause we might want to just leave it alone like Brian says this year and then spend this next year looking at next, you know, next year's budget. Um, versus being behind if we make changes now.
I'm not saying we would make changes. That's what I was saying. We may end up in the same, same place. I just want to look at the comparable town, the towns. I did have kind of a concern with the looking at our regional stuff and we've talked about this before, you know, from our budget wise, those are not necessarily the best benchmarks to use when we're talking about fees and how we equate to you know, what is someone doing and, you know, acting or, you know, that kind of, I think Hudson was one of the towns, but I didn't see again, Millis, Ashland, Pepperell, Holbrook, uh, those were towns that we've discussed being better benchmark communities when we are assessing um, as a litmus test, you know, how we are, are, are doing even from a budgetary expense standpoint. So it could be the same, but I'd like to hear for more um, similar demographic communities who have similar how, how we are falling within those ranges. And then maybe if it's the same, you know, then, then we, we vote. I just would like that data instead.
Brian, I just, I have one question because I know when we did all this research years and years ago and came up with the, the annual cost versus per sport or per, per activity. Um, we keep talking about it being a sports, um, an athletic fee. And it does include activities, which it's hard to do apples to apples for different communities. I was under the impression it included like the clubs and all of that up at the high school, but it looks like it doesn't include everything. Right?
No, they, that, ours is an athletic activity. No, being that ours is an athletic activity fee, it includes everything.
It does, because it doesn't show that. There was one, I think it's the form that showed drama, W A V M, but it didn't include like all the clubs, but it does include those, right?
Right, we have a great deal. And this is the same information that we presented because Wayne and I did. Go back and look at the revenue and look at the expenses and we are, I'm more than happy to go back and pull ten different towns. It doesn't change our revenue. It doesn't change our expenses. It doesn't change how much money we give out in stipends.
Are you asking about, oh, sorry. Are you asking if it includes like cooking club? No, it doesn't. It only includes those activities, jazz, play, yearbook, athletics.
So the other ones are just, they come out of the budget. They're just the stipends that we just come, have come out of the budget.
Yeah, two hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess my other thought would be, um. I know when the, when these were last amended, there was a lot of parent input. Given on, to that, uh, there was about how, how, how that may work or may not work and it was. Viewed as a temporary fix, not necessarily a long-term solution of, particularly like the, the. The fees, because they were talking about getting rid of sports at Fowler. You know, that was a topic that came up at one point and how to retain that. So I would. Also wonder what kind of, you know, parent feedback, because we've gotten emails that not are very favorable. But I don't know what other feedback that parents have been able to help or give or ascertain to provide. That's been taken into consideration that we're sticking with these.
So these, the, there wouldn't have been, I, um, there was, there wasn't a plan for this to be taken up by the school committee until I was going through policies. Um, you know, for the policy subcommittee and saw that in our policy, we say that it needs to be voted on and then I remembered that actually. At the mask training, they had talked about it as well. Um, in the D E I subcommittee, we've been talking about wanting to eliminate the fees altogether because. You know, if, if we think that, like, if we care about the whole child, sports and drama are just as important as art and music and math and science and. Social skills and it's all part of the same thing. Um, but, you know, they, Brian and Wayne looked into that and it wasn't realistic for this year. Um, and so since there wasn't much. It's, I don't know the word for it, but, um.
I guess I would want to hear more about that discussion of why it was like those, the reasoning a little bit more, uh, the discussion, why? Cause I, I haven't, I haven't had any of that in-depth information on. Um, on what, and I see you flailing your hands back there, Brian. So I know you're frustrated and I do apologize that you're so frustrated. But this is the feedback that I'm giving right now. And so I'm sorry, it's not welcomed, but I definitely. Would like to see if we could um, maybe have a vote at another time on this and with the. And at least with the benchmarking communities. Um, or if we are approving them for a particular time, are we approving them for the whole year or can we put stipulations in that? Approval, this is, you know, with the assumption that, I don't know. A, a parent, you know, a task force, like, part of like how parent feedback will be playing into this during the year F Y twenty-three. To help inform, you know, amending or addressing or how that will work a little bit more because I, I, I don't see that. Where is this going to be changed if, if we're not?
I don't think that there was a plan to change it. It was something that, oh, sorry, Brian.
I was going to say, we would love to eliminate fees, both Wayne and I, and we looked at it. We are, at, at the end of the day, I am extremely happy that we have the full complement of programs that, that we have. Both athletic, extracurricular, drama, sport, all covering all bases. And we have talked about it at school committee and we have shared this information with the school committee previously. We don't have a revenue source to offset this. So we, we acknowledge we spend a lot of money on these programs. They're good for kids. They're really good for kids. And it's, and we do pay adults a small stipend to facilitate a sport or an activity. It's still good for kids. There's not a lot that we could do. We could survey the whole town and they could all say, we would love for sports to be free. I would love for sports to be free. I don't have an alternate source to write that check though yet, so.
Yes, what I would be asking though also is, because I know one of the issues that has also happened and I've heard this from a lot of parents. Is that the fees are not collected um, by every family proportionately. Every year because, so are we relying on the same, what is the instances where we have a fee? Is it the same families who are only paying? How many people, how much are we not collecting for people who should be paying? That is also some, some data because if we then made a better effort, you know, to reach out and collect more. The, I mean, even electronically, I know we talked about, you know, having people be able to pay through um, electronic means. Right now it's just. Bringing a check and it just, you know, not as, as easy to pay. Is that something that will be able? To help support that collection process that maybe that might help us eliminate or reduce. Some of those fees from where they are, because I don't think that we've done a, a great job in collecting historically from. All those who have used, I've had parents tell me they haven't paid for years. And uh, because they either don't get a bill or sometimes they get a bill or sometimes they get a bill for one thing. So I really am questioning the process and all, how we are implementing it. And Hillary's feedback about like, sometimes kids pay who are, you know, free lunch and sometimes they don't. It's, to me, we should be a little bit more clear in understanding of the structure of. This or not, and if we shouldn't be asking people to pay, if we're saying we're committed to not having people pay who are free lunch, I think. Understanding that impact of what that dollar amount would be great as well.
Um, okay, I think we should table this because I, when I was asked to put it on the agenda, I thought it was going to be um. Just understand, like, understanding that it was kind of too late to do anything about it for this year. We were just going to. In order to follow our policy, be approving it, um. I don't think that like anybody's ready to have, don't delve into the whole thing. Sorry, Mauro.
Um, I, when you say table it, are you, are you basically saying that we're going to take it up at the next meeting?
Um, or the one after that, I'm not sure what, I, I have, I was thinking, I was just going to ask Brian, like, what he thinks about timeline.
Cause I definitely feel like, you know, we shouldn't. I think. That we should be talking about it at the next meeting. I know it's, you know, the middle of the summer, but. Um, you know, I think this is something that we, we shouldn't just put off. And then, you know, and I agree with um, with Natasha about all, all those things about. Who pays and who gets bills and who doesn't and all that stuff because that, those should be put into place. I can tell you, I have never gotten a bill. In all, you know, the years that I've, you know, um, been paying, but I pay pretty much. Right around the time the kids start their, their activity, which usually is in the fall because my kids all play sports. Um, but, um. So, you know, I don't, I don't know how, what the set thing is and we should definitely talk about that. Um, or at least be informed how that, how that works. Um, I would love to know about, you know, the amount of money that we're not actually getting. For the kids that are, that are being, that are involved. Um, so, but I, you know, tabling for now, I think this is maybe a good. Discussion right now and then being able to vote on it on the, at the next meeting.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, um, we, like. People, I don't think like Brian was prepared or Wayne was prepared to answer those questions. Like, I think it's definitely a topic that we, the school committee needs to talk about. I hadn't like prepared or I don't think they prepared for it to be like a full discussion tonight. It was just going to be the vote. Because we say we will. Um, so I think that I, you know, we have to give them a little bit of time, um, and.
Sorry, Brian.
Until we prepare to talk about it.
That's fine. We also don't have an athletic director. So this, I mean, realistically, we can grab some more data and I'm happy to share that with you. Um, I, I still don't think it changes where we're at for the, this fiscal year moving forward. Cause we've really built a pretty tight budget with these numbers included. Because we have talked about it in the past and recognized that we weren't able to change it even though we tried. But we can certainly gather more data around some more towns, look at. The overall who gets billed, who doesn't. Um, and I think we'll be able to tighten up our processes with a full-time A D. I mean, that's one of the things that, that role is able to do much better than a part-time A D. So I think it fits really well into our plan moving forward.
And I do remember we have talked, I don't, I apologize if it was that we hadn't talked about it. I think we had talked about also pursuing possible again online. You know, with the, it, with the, the new system, if that was a path that we would be able to explore. So hearing updates about that as well, like, yes, we will be able to do that in F Y twenty-three. Because then we'll have some real data to, like, to measure. Right now it's kind of. We want to do better, but I don't see a lot of data on how, how we're doing, what steps we're able to, we're doing to do better, you know, and, and that's. What I, I guess my, some of my frustration is, and we do every year hear feedback from parents and I feel like we need to somewhere, instead of saying. Here we go, the same information, you know, what is the path that we're trying to at least chip away at um, that in some way.
So I had put on the rolling agenda draft that I made for next year to take this up in like October or something. So that it was something we could talk about and delve into before the budget's created for the next year. Um, but I think we can do it as a topic for the July meeting. That way. Um, if we need to discuss it and talk about it and then gather information for July, it can be voted on in August and still be voted before. The fees are collected in September. Um, but I think that too much of a discussion today isn't really fair, because that wasn't what it was like on the agenda for. Um. Does that work?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um. Okay, superintendent's report. Brian.
Yeah, I was muted. Colleen, if you want to show that presentation, but I can start. Um, because I think the agenda has it listed in order. The nurse M O U actually does not require school committee vote. Oh, is that the first slide? We should start with that. That's like the great news. Um, we actually had three. Quote-unquote graduation ceremonies, the class of twenty twenty-two, the Green Meadow third grade. Celebration and the Fowler eighth grade. And Jeff already mentioned, and I think Mary may have mentioned at last week's meeting. But the high school graduation speeches were phenomenal, um, probably the best I've heard this year and I've heard several. At several different graduations. And each building did a really, really nice end of the year celebration for their students. To recognize them and celebrate them after a couple of difficult years and. Help them move forward. So just a big cheers to uh, all three buildings, all three classes that are moving on. It was really exciting. I think those, some of you are at either the high school and or Fowler and or even. The Green Meadow one, depending on, you know, how old your children were or where you were able to be, but they were all different but special. And I think they were really nice for the community as well. And we have, and I, I'll do that, we'll do uh, the assistant principal at Fowler, Dan Snyder. Sorry, Dave Snyder is here. Cause I saw his face on the screen earlier and he's been super patient. Uh, there he is. So why don't I let him instead of reading the screen, I will just let. Mister Snyder introduce himself, say hi, you can put a face and a name together, together and then we'll uh, let him enjoy the rest of his evening. Mister Snyder, you're on.
Hello, I'm happy to be aboard, um. Do you want a little, what, you would like a bio of uh, my life? So I, I am coming from Wall fam where I taught uh, fifteen years um, in various degrees of E L A. Um, but I was, I'm excited to jump into the next level of leadership. Um, because I'm looking to have a bigger impact on students and the community, be a part of a community and. I didn't apply to many places, uh, Maynard was one of the only few pieces, places I applied to because. I was looking for a small community to be a part of and being a resident in Bolton. It uh, it's right next door, so I feel that it's kind of, there's a kinship to our, to our towns and. I'm just really happy to be aboard. I'm excited to get started.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Yeah.
And we've been having some leadership retreats the last couple of days and Mister Snyder's been a part of those as well. So he's a great addition, good. A good teammate for Principal Barth. So we're looking forward to having them at Fowler.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Welcome. I had one question. I think you kind of touched on it, but I'm hoping, is it okay to ask Hillary? Um, so you mentioned about taking that leap from teacher to, to admin. And I'm just curious about that, because I know for one, it's, it's sometimes a very difficult leap, especially for a teacher who has such a vast. Um, years of experience in teaching.
Hmm.
Um, and curious to hear a little bit more about that and also taking that leap during. The pandemic as well, or considering that how that may or may not impacted that decision. Um.
It's a good question. Um, yeah, did the, did the pandemic, well, I, so I got, I obtained my. Um, administrative certificate back in two thousand thirteen and I sort of put it on ice for a while because my kids were real little and now. Our youngest is about to go into preschool, so it was sort of, it was time. And I was looking around at the opportunities that were presenting themselves and this came up and it was, it kind of all sort of. Like it was, was I going to take that jump? My wife's been pushing me to do it for a while, but I was like, whoa, like having two kids out of school. Or not in school yet was, I was like, maybe it's too early, but it just kind of felt like it was the right time. Did the pandemic have anything to do with it? It might have. I think the last couple of years were, were difficult, but I, I don't. I think I, I'm, I was just ready. I've been ready for a while, just family-wise and, and logistically speaking, I don't know if I was. It was ready, so. But I feel that I definitely had, like, being part of like a school, a, a wall fam community during the pandemic and seeing how everybody kind of came together. And seeing how teachers struggled and the support from the administration or at times lack of, I think that that definitely changed my perspective on. On leadership and what my role would be in, in support of teachers. Um, and that's, as coming into a leadership role, that's, I, to support students, I'm really also excited to, to really be a support for teachers and to be. Part of a team that, you know, rises everybody, you know, brings everybody up. Um, and not, you know, like, seeing things in the past of, you know, some leaders being bosses rather than, than leaders or, or kind of part of the team. So.
Thank you, thank you very much. It sounds like um, that, thank you for choosing Maynard.
Um, yeah, we have him.
And um, it sounds like the stars were aligned for, for this to happen. Um, and as I was told earlier to let the Fowler leadership team know. In case you had heard that, I would love to hear more about that restraint room and the plans that the building leadership at Fowler might have for that in the future. So, um.
I just heard about it the first time tonight.
There you go.
Looking to, yeah, yeah.
So thank you very much.
Sure. Any other questions?
That's welcome.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Colleen, you want to do your thing? Updates. So the case M O U with the nurse I included in the folder, the handout that the M O U references, so you were able to see that. And I will sign that and send that back over to uh, their executive director so that we're on, on pace for next year. Um, as you know, I think we, I don't. Kevin Caruso, the assistant principal at the high school, um, is leaving us. He's taking a job closer to home. Um, much, much closer to home and for him with a young family that it's a very good fit for him personally. Um, and it's a much bigger school, so it's actually a really good, professionally, it's a good move for him, personally, it's a good move for him, so. You know, I, I speak for everybody, but we support him in this move, even though I was hoping he might wait a year. Um, but we will, we posted the job and we will start our search for uh, high school assistant principal. Um, immediately, I E posting. So we wish him well and we will find a qualified candidate for that job. Thanks, Colleen. Um, just, I know at the last meeting we mentioned including some, some of the superintendent information on the webpage, so if you're bored and you go to the webpage. There it is, um, the weekly communications, some information about the building project. Central administration and then district goals, superintendent goals, self-evaluation. So thanks to Colleen, that was a, a very quick. Uh, update and that's, we'll just keep that there and that can be updated. And then we also talked about the Green Meadow building project timeline, so luckily we have a very strong owner's project manager and I reached out to them. And they responded very quickly. So on the next several pages, if you haven't read them, you'll be able to read them. Um, it takes us through the timeline. Um, Colleen, if you want to go to the next page. From the preferred schematic reports submission, what we talked about earlier tonight to. to sort of the next thing that would be due at the beginning of August. Um, and I won't read them all to you, but the key dates are there with a description of what's due. I, the title being facilities assessment subcommittee presentation is in beginning of August. So there's module three, module four and module five, which you'll be able to read. We'll also put those on the webpage as well. Um, so people can find that easily. Um, so that's just a little bit of follow-up for everybody. It's already there. Thank you, Colleen. Um, just trying to keep everybody informed about what's going on.
Thank you so much for the website, by the way. I just, when I looked, um, Colleen, I know that was it was feedback that was, you know, only recently like shared from me and I know um on top of all the other many things that were going on, putting a, creating that repository for information uh for the community to access is really great. Um, so thank you very much.
Absolutely. And that is it for my report. I am happy to say that we have done a lot tonight. So I will turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, I think the biggest thing is congratulations to all the staff and administrators for making it through the year. Um, it was still, I think there was a lot of hope at the beginning of the year that it was going to be a lot easier than last year and then it was continuance of COVID craziness. Um, I just wanted to say um congratulations to all the graduates. Um. And for a chair report, I really don't have a lot. I added um to the folder for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three minutes, a draft um rolling agenda. And there's tons of stuff on there. I went through the last few years of um rolling agendas and minutes and stuff and took basically everything that was covered at previous years' meetings and put them on the rolling agenda. Um, primarily to make sure we didn't miss things. Um, I don't, I don't want to freak out and think that I think we're gonna cover all that stuff or have all those presentations or anything. I just figured it would help to have everything there um and then delete and move as needed. Um, and then I took the spreadsheet from the previous years for the liaisons and subcommittees. Um, and updated that and I added some things for some of the town um groups and um committees that have asked for liaisons. Um, and they can be, none of those are sent to more either. They were just things that um people have mentioned over time and I sort of put comments explaining. But I thought that could help for getting ready for the July meeting. Um, and we have the workshop scheduled for July sixth at Town Hall um with Tracy Novak instead of Dorothy um due to scheduling issues. Um, and we will work on the school committee's self-assessment and superintendent evaluation then. Um. And that's all I have. So, um, and then for subcommittee reports and members' comments, Elizabeth's not here, so Mauro.
Um. Let's see, so we had a policy subcommittee meeting yesterday. Is it yesterday? My, my days, my weeks going by really quickly. So um yesterday and um we have um a bunch of policies that we're gonna go through um at the July meeting. I've already started putting um some of them in the meeting folder. Um, so if anybody wants to take a look um at those. Um, we do have another policy um subcommittee meeting in like a week, week or a couple of weeks um before our next school committee meeting, um just to go through a few more. Um, and then um I just wanted to um possibly, you know, talk again at, at some point about um how we do our agendas and the time allotment um for, for each of our um agenda items. Um, and I guess um today is, is kind of a good example of was Jeff given twenty minutes to do his, um, like, did somebody say, Jeff, do your, your presentation in twenty minutes? And if so, we need to add more time onto our agenda so that we also get time to ask questions. So um, I guess that's my, my uh does not, not putting anything on Jeff for how long um his, his um presentation was because it was very informative, but it was, it's more just a matter of what is the correct information that we're giving to presenters? And what's the correct information that we're get putting on our agendas? Um, so that everybody is informed, including committee members. Um, so that we're, we're well-prepared. So um I think at some point we need to really kind of discuss this. Um, maybe in more depth or I don't know if this is part of the workshop that we could, you know, at some point that we can talk about. Um, just so that we're um being cognizant of the time that we're, that we're using in our meetings because they are pretty long. So. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you. And I agree with you about that. Um, Mary?
Um, I just said a couple of things and and one was more logistics. So um Fresh Picks is going to be ending, I guess, like right now. And I was wondering how the transition goes from Fresh Picks to Witsen's and over the summer and informing people of any changes and things of that nature. I don't know, Wayne, if that's a question for you.
Yeah, I um wasn't prepared for this.
Oh, sorry. I didn't, I didn't think it was a long thing, so I figured it was a quick answer.
But um they have given me a um transition plan, to be honest, which is kind of template-like. And um a meeting with the district manager uh next week. Um, they have met initially with the former Fresh Picks folks that are on in our facilities and told them of the process of uh, you know, applying to Witsen's and they were provided with all of that information and uh they assured me that unless there was uh some grievous red flag that they would attempt to hire all, if not most of uh the, the folks that we currently have in our buildings. And um they have been made aware of the most recent Maynard legislation about the plastic bags. Uh, so I've shared that with them. Um, so I'm waiting to kind of get my hands on the um the district manager because there's not a whole lot going on in terms of serving that type of thing between now and August. And so my thing is, is just like you said, Mary, what are you gonna do to get folks in kitchens, get them familiarized so that come uh late August or early September, you're gonna tell me what your plan is to get food to the Green Meadow so that they have the same menu as the other two schools? So uh, that's where we are. I'll know more once I meet with the district manager next week.
Okay, great. Maybe we could get an update, maybe I forget when our August meeting is, but also just want to make sure that um residents, you know, that the parents all know of any changes and and that kind of thing too. So um, and early on, you know, before the first week in school, for instance. So thank you for that. Um, and then Brian, um, what's going on with the fields? Should we be having a meeting this summer or kind of? I know we sort of left it that um.
Yep, we will. We'll have a couple of meetings. We'll, I think we'll wait until we hire the A D.
Right, okay.
So that's kind of, that's in the next few weeks.
Okay.
Already under, that process is already underway. The screening committee's already started looking at resumes and they have a meeting, I think, tomorrow. Um, if not next week. So by mid-July, we'll have another meeting.
Excellent. All right, great, thank you. And then the one thing that I ask for every year is, and, and I'm just not sure who I should follow up with. Um, all of our seniors and where they not necessarily are going on to school, but where they have been accepted. It's wonderful to put that on our website. Um. I know we've done it in some years past, but it's on a lot of other school districts of, you know, just all of the different schools that the students have been accepted to because it's
You can do that.
It's quite impressive and um, yeah, so if we could um do that, that would be phenomenal.
Sure. Good idea. Thanks for the reminder.
And that's it.
Hi, Natasha?
Um, just in, in line with some of the same, the, the seniors, I also actually had been meaning to ask about the honor rolls. I know at one point we had, um, we used to share those or post them um about students who, you know, had honor, made honor rolls and at the different schools and I um, I don't know if we've gotten away from that for a particular reason or we just, you know, people, new people, things happening, but um if there's a possibility that that information or understanding if, if we're gonna maybe share that again going forward in the future or if there's, we're not gonna be sharing that, that'd be great to understand.
Yeah, I can follow up at the building level and get back to you. Sure. Thank you.
Thanks. Um.
It was great. Beacon, yeah, the Beacon used to have it. Of course, now the Beacon, yeah.
We've, we've done different versions. Like, sometimes there was an email to the community. I know at one point some principals would, you know, post on the social media like a link uh, you know, for the different terms. So it would be, you know, would go out to celebrate and, and for whatever, however, we just get to understand like where, where we're settled at and so what we know what to expect. I, I think um hearing more about that would be great.
I have a request. If, if we do something with the kids' names, like, can it be like in an image or something instead of text so it can't come up with Google searching? Like, so that if someone Googles a kid's name, it wouldn't come up?
Wouldn't they? Wouldn't they just type the name or no? I know what you're saying about a Google image search.
No, not the image search. If somebody, like, if, if it were text on your, on the school website and someone were to Google the child's name, I wouldn't want the school to come up, like the school website to come up with a child's name to give away what school the child goes to. Um, where I think if it were like a PDF or an image, Googling the child's name, the, it wouldn't.
I, it would need to be an image, even a PDF, you can, you can, it will show up.
Uh-huh.
I can talk to Adam about that.
All right, thank you. Sorry, Natasha. I don't want to.
No, no, I, I, and again, I don't know if there was some reason, you know, that we've kind of stepped away. There always sometimes is, and I just, if there hasn't, I just wanted to understand because it was something um.
Did it, did it happen at the same time as the change in posting the class lists on the doors?
No, um, the high school was doing a really good job about posting the, the, they shared a lot um probably in their newsletters and, and I think there was some turnover at the Fowler, you know, Fowler and just again, I, I bandwidth, who knows? I don't really know. I just wanted to um, I didn't know if school-specific, I just didn't want to spend a lot of time on it, but just understanding if we, if it is something we, we could get back to, if there's a reason that we're not, be good to understand uh what that, what that might be. Um. The other part too, I just wanted to update is for the charter review committee. We had a meeting last night and we were trying to map out, we'd gotten feedback back from the town about the timeline for some of these charter updates. We had hoped it would be able to happen in the fall, but there's three steps that will have to happen. So the town has to be at a town meeting, the town, that the town votes on the amendments, then it has to be submitted a draft to the attorney general's office. They take time to get back. And then it has to then be brought uh forward for another step. I think it's something to do with the election. So around, like, after the election, there's another sub-action. So long story short, it's very like unlikely that it will be finalized by the fall because the charter review committee also wants to do uh public forums and, you know, preparing for warrants and all that takes, takes time and it's, we're heading into the summer. But there is some updates that I, I can certainly share loosely once we finalize, like what we are gonna be looking at. And I think one of the things was the resignation piece on for, for elected officials. That was um something that had come up, I think, in the policy subcommittee. And so that, some of that will be addressed a little bit and more depth. One is about how to give notice. The right way that to give notice is actually a, a process where it goes, it's supposed to be, an individual can give notice, goes to the town clerk. It can be future dated as well. And our charter just doesn't speak to that, but that is part of M G L. And I think this has been some ambiguity where it's felt that the, the, the notice has to happen when the person, only when the person resigns and it has to only go to the select board, but that's actually not the, the complete process. So um general council or town council has given some feedback on that and uh we, we've looked at other town charters too that mimic some language that we can include there as well. And um also, Mauro, you'll probably understand some of this is the appointed or when you start. Um, if you're appointed or if you're elected and so that part also will be um addressed a little bit more clearer where if someone is elected, there's someone serving as an appointed. And it's more than like a year on their term that they would start after that election. They wouldn't have to wait to the person appointed. So that was, there's some language on that that will be hopefully clear because I think that's been, that was confusing um a lot when people get appointed and then there's an election and different places in the charter speak to different parts of it. And um so just to iron out some of those confusing pieces. That's uh, that's it for that. Just to echo, yes, congratulations to everybody. I hope uh our, all of our staff and faculty have um celebrated in some capacity with um cheers and dancing. Um, and have a great, look forward to some great vacations.
Um, thank you. Um, so we don't have any minutes, right? Okay, um, and do, can we do the warrants um group together or does some need to be separated?
And I won't be abstaining from any of the warrants.
Okay, um, so without objection, I move to accept warrants twenty-two dash zero five one, twenty-two dash zero five two, twenty-two dash zero five three, twenty-two dash zero five four and twenty-two dash zero five five.
Second?
I think it's just, you know.
Yeah, it was just the.
Yeah, that's right. Without objection. Sorry, I always forget the one. Yeah.
Okay, fantastic. So those are approved and um motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion? Well, okay. Um, Mary?
Yes.
Mauro?
Yes.
Um, Natasha?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you all.
You have a good night.
Nice.
Great. Thank you.